All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is October 26th at 7:02 PM. Lanya, if you can call up a roll.
Absolutely. Howard Johnson.
Here.
Ken Hall.
Here.
Ross Driven.
Here.
Spurlock.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Carney.
Here.
Meeting called to order at 7:03 PM.
Okay, we're gonna start with public comments and Sheree's gonna read our first few. Okay. This first one, sorry, is from Chris Morgan. While I applaud the district's effort to clear confusion with a fact checker, I think it only sells more confusion with misleading, incompetent, and inaccurate statements and asks that it be updated accordingly. Here are a few examples. I wanna pause for a second just to acknowledge that these statements that I'm about to read have been addressed with Mr. Morgan. Yeah. So, a false statement. Confirmatory testing is needed after a positive shield result. While the district is correct to say the shield testing does not require confirmatory testing, the response expands that statement to say that the district will not accept outside testing of a shield test that may reveal a false positive. Those are separate issues. Although the false positive rate of shield testing is quite low, one to, oh, point one to point two percent, with the district of about 5,000 students, then mathematically, we should expect five to 10 false positives. We have already seen this happen. While a parent should feel no need to get a confirmatory test after a positive shield test, it does not necessarily follow that the district should not accept outside testing by the same logic. If we have five to 10 false positives per week, and average six students quarantine per student, that test positive based on current week data of seven positive tests and 42 quarantine students, then we might expect to be falsely quarantining 30 to 60 students per week. In fact, at the current Oak Park Village transmission rate with 48 new cases last week and a population of about 50,000, then we would expect about five true positives and five false positives per week, even at 99.9% specificity. Sorry. If half of our positive tests could be false, then it makes no sense to not accept outside testing. Whether or confirmatory testing is accepted in a separate matter, see next question. Good time? But it does not follow the confirmatory testing is necessarily banned. I'm sorry. Whether confirmatory or confirmatory test is accepted in a separate manner, see next question. But it does not follow the confirmatory testing is necessarily banned just because it isn't needed. Just because popcorn from Lake Theater is good, that it does not need more butter does not mean that the ban, that they ban more butter on the popcorn. False statement. District 97 has, has the ability to develop procedures for confirmatory testing. The answer to the statement is also misleading. The answer includes the following statement. According to our public health director creating guidance that does not comply with the state rules could negatively impact the village's ability to continue to provide state-funded shield testing for freeing our community. The use of the word could, my emphasis, in here makes it misleading to call the original statement false. In fact, IDPH has published the following statement about COVID-19 testing in schools. Public health officials and nurses will work with providers to order confirmatory testing when needed to minimize the risk of false positives or false negative results. In simplest terms, if the results are not what could be expected, example, positive and asymptomatic person or negative and a person with COVID-like illnesses with no exposure, confirmatory testing is recommended. That's time. Okay. Okay, the next one is from Carly Weiss. Carly has a three-point or a three message thing, so I'm gonna try to get through it all. So, her first one asks, we have been, we have been informed that a student is not permitted to test back into school because of equity constraints. Therefore, only tests performed by shield through the school would be accepted. And which time, we were also informed this is not possible because the school does not have capacity to do so. Although each week, a student is allocated a test from shield. Wait, no. Sorry. A lot going on, sorry. She writes, the CDC defines a close contact as someone who is less than six feet away from, from infected person. Laboratory confirms or clinical diagnosis from a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. For example, three individuals, five-minute exposure for a total of 15 minutes. Schools are strict about enforcing there be no more than 15 minutes of unmasked eating periods and lunch is always at the same time each day. I do not understand how a student can accumulate more than 15 minutes of unmasked time over a 24-hour period, period purely from lunch exposure. If students are expected to quarantine regardless, why do we not allow the children to return to their usual lunchtime during the 18 or more minutes? I think that is it's. If the CDC states a person with COVID-19 is considered infectious starting two days before they develop the symptoms or two days before the date of their positive test if they do not have symptoms, why do we not use that as a start date for quarantining, especially for a sibling of positively, positive-tested students? Thank you. Make sure that I read them all. The CDC, um, let's see, I think I read this already. I'm just trying to make sure I got all of her comments. Why does a physician or pharmacist have authority to test back into school when a student has been identified for exhibiting COVID symptoms, but not for when a student has been identified for being a close contact? Similarly, why is there not the same equitable uncertainty for both instances? And then the last one is from poor Kate. Okay, sorry. The district has tried to, I don't even know how to pronounce this. Have to dedicate responsibility for not having a test to stay policy in District 97 and simply given to the opinions of the Oak Park Health Department. Although IDPH does not have jurisdiction, jurisdiction in this case, their public guidance not only allows but recommends tests to stay policies to keep more kids in school. ISBE and ISBE, rather. An IDPH now allows strategy for close contacts to remain in school following exposure to COVID-19 through a test to stay protocol as, as has been documented by the CDC. And then she says the source. The same guidance comments on the value of NAT, N-A-T, PCR and rapid, and it's a, and she just, sorry, test as part of the strategy to keep kids in school, even though OPHD has convinced the village that anything but shield testing is not the gold standard. Gold standard being inaccurate language used to provoke fear and compliance. The district has a role to play in working with the Oak Park Health Department to find solutions that maximize the time children spend in school and help the local health departments fulfill their duty to identify the least restrictive means of controlling the transmission of the disease. Section 6901315, Responsibility and Duties of the Certified Local Health Department Illinois Administrative Code. On average, eight to 10 students have been placed in a 14-day quarantine after being identified as close contact, resulting in well over 200 students misinvited in-person instruction. While it would be easy to calculate the Oak Park Health Department and D97's claim to not be tracking how many close contacts ever turned positive, likely because the number is zero or less than five or zero to 2.5%. Or we could look at LAUSD that quarantined 30,000, or yeah, 30,000 students and found 63 later tested positive, 2%. The Oak Park Department of Health has expressed concern about the test to stay policy until there's a published data. Fortunately, the district can provide this published data. A study published in the Lancet demonstrated that the test of positive policy was no less safe than self-isolation, and she says the source. Additionally, the CDC has published results from Utah stating how many hours of classroom instruction were saved with the test to stay policy in certain schools with no increase in the rate of positive tests. They say the source. Additionally, we know that 30 states are utilizing test to stay, which means we surely have plenty of data to review. While I understand D97 formally requests a test to stay option to be recommended by Oak Park Health Department, there has been no substantial move on this. It appears that, oh, as though D97 is not motivated to keep the most amount of students in class, nor did it appear that Oak Park Health Department has provided the least restrictive means of controlling transmission. I strongly encourage this Board of Education to hold the district administration accountable to ensure all students are receiving their access free and appropriate public education, sincerely, K. Odom. Okay, then, next, Nancy is gonna read our next batch of public comments.
All right, this first one is from Fabian Wiss. Respected D97 Board members, the CDC defines a 14-day quarantine as the safest quarantine option, 14 days being double the maximum observed incubation period. This option does not balance safety versus burden. It is the option with, with the absolute priority for safety. The CDC does not recommend imposing a 14-day quarantine. Instead, the CDC recommends several shorter alternatives that appropriately balance safety versus burden. One of these alternatives is the 10-day quarantine with a negative PCR test on day eight. This alternative bears a 0.3% chance that the child might still carry the virus and is entirely acceptable according to the CDC and IDPH. In Oak Park, however, we also require testing testing on days 11, 12, 13, and 14 to meet our own gold standard. D97 is then adding another requirement that says that these additional tests must be conducted through the school system. This has led to bizarre situations in which families present a letter from their pediatric physician that states that their child may safely return to school, yet the school does not let the child return and insists on additional four days of quarantine. I have been told two reasons for this. One is related to the quality of the COVID-19 tests. To that, I must say that we are already at very low likelihood and it is completely unnecessary to place additional quality requirements on tests. The second reason is related to equity. To that, I must say that childcare for an additional four days of quarantine is much more expensive than a PCR test and four subsequent self-tests. The self-tests are available at any pharmacy for a total of $50. And there are numerous places that offer the PCR test at no cost. Furthermore, if the supervision of a child placed into quarantine for four days is expected, then likewise, you could expect that this person is taking the child to the healthcare provider to be tested. Organizing additional childcare is more difficult for minorities who are more often essential workers and at risk of losing their job, income, or both if staying home to supervise their child. Therefore, your current policy does not produce more equity. It further amplifies the inequities that exist in our community. I therefore request that you drop the requirement that the additional Oak Park-specific tests are conducted through the school system so that we can meet the gold standard and stick to the overall accepted 10-day quarantine. All right. And this one is from Julie Spirison, and I apologize if I am mispronouncing your name. Good evening. Why are public comments read but never discussed at board meetings? Are they discussed in the executive session? It's very frustrating as a parent to submit public comments on important matters. They get read and then poof, nothing. No discussion at the meeting, no follow-up, no insight, nada. I implore the D97 Board and leadership team to address this matter. And I'm actually gonna break quickly with protocol here on this to say that that is actually the protocol to not respond at this time when we're reading. However, if you request a response to your, your comment, then we actually do have, either the administration or the board will respond to your comment. Let's see here, next comment. This one is from Karen Thomas. I am in favor of unmasking the kids. I'm in favor of eating them, letting them eat lunch together instead of alternating rows eating for 15 minutes each. I am in favor of letting them converse during lunch instead of watching videos in silence. I am in favor of letting the kids play together and run around freely during recess instead of keeping them in zones separated by classroom. Enough of our gold standard COVID mitigation protocols already. Enough singing through double masks, enough. Let's encourage genuine health, movement, communication, the flow of oxygen, play, interaction. This is already the norm outside of school. Thanks, Karen Thomas.
Thank you. Oh, there's one more.
So, one more came in at 7:00. You want me to grab that one as well?
Sure.
Okay. So, this one is from Elizabeth Newheart. Uh, District, uh, D90, sorry, District 97 Board of Ed and Community. When the school year started, parents had an option of signing up for tests to stay as it was marketed as an option to keep our kids in school when possible and avoid the 14-day quarantine. As quickly as we signed up, the goalposts moved and we were no longer allowed to utilize that option for a litany of reasons made hazily clear to us parents. We've asked for data on the quarantine stats, seeking to understand how many children who are quarantined actually end testing, actually end testing positive for COVID-19. We've been told we don't track this data, that data. Meanwhile, countless children have endured 14-day quarantines, receiving little if any instruction, but rather a non-interactive window into the classroom. The children continue to get the short end of the stick in all of the decision-making. We've heard anecdotal comments from teachers that it's the hardest year they've ever had due to the huge learning loss their students are experiencing. COVID remains low-risk to children, but the mounting mental health crisis among our youth is growing by the day. Any pediatrician will echo these, those sentiments. I implore the district to think about their biggest stakeholder, the children, and insist on a test to stay policy for District 97, the one we were promised. ISBE and IDPH follow a strategy for close contacts to remain in school following exposure to COVID-19 through a test to stay protocol, as has been documented by the CDC, sources listed. The district must work with the Oak Park Health Department to maximize, maximize the time children spend in school. While the Oak Park Health Department, yeah, sorry, the Oak Park Department of Health has expressed concern about a test to stay policy until there's published data. Published data does exist. The Lancet demonstrated that a test to take, test to stay policy was no less safe than self-isolation, sources listed. Additionally, the CDC has published results from Utah showing how many hours of classroom instruction were saved with the test to stay policy in certain schools with no increase in the rate of positive tests, sources listed. It is the district's role to fight for our children, work with the OPD HD to enact what is the least restrictive means of controlling transmission while ensuring all students have access to in-person learning, continued learning loss is minimized, and mental health is kept top of mind. Sincerely, Elizabeth Newheart. That's all of them.
Nancy. Okay, up next, we have the consent agenda. Someone could read the motion?
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park Elementary School, District 97, moves to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Yes. Okay. Ken Hall.
Approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Howard Johnson.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Carney.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, up next, we have an action item. So, we are gonna table item 4.2.1 until a later date. Uh, so that brings us to item 4.2.2. If someone could read the motions.
I move that the Board of Education of Oak Park School District 97 approves the position of Director of Data Analytics and Research as presented during the October 12, 2021 board meeting.
Carney.
Yes.
Oh, we need someone to second it.
I'll second it while I'm here.
All right. Moore.
Yes.
Spurlock.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Howard Johnson.
Yes.
Ross Driven.
Yes.
Ken Hall.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, up next, we have school updates. Michael. Go ahead.
Um, today's topic that we're gonna talk about are good news, our matrix, our health and safety updates, outbreaks, mitigations, and most importantly, the vaccination clinics that we are hoping to implement very soon. Um, and also our survey results that we sent out. And we're gonna talk about what our next steps are. So, according to the latest status report of the Village Oak Park, the weekly case totals are declining, which is great news. And for the fourth week in a row, our community transmission rate is substantial. That's down from high in August and September. Very encouraging. The number of positive students and staff is declining. And we also had our, through the midst of all this, we had our family teacher conferences and we wanted to thank all of our parents and staff who met last Thursday and Friday. From what I hear, it's very successful. Now, the vaccinating update, you know, um, I'm going to just say our Health Department Director contacted me, I think it was last Thursday. She came to us with a proposal to host eight separate clinics, vaccination clinics, for our eight elementary schools over a four-night period. That would mean there would be two schools per night that would be, the clinic would be held. So, the Health Department would support these events. They're gonna provide the vaccines, the security, traffic control, registration. We did have previous plans that Dr. Stark had been working on in regards to a Saturday clinic. There were some concerns with that as well. It was going to be held at the high school. We did cancel that. Um, we would prefer to have our children in our own school, a familiar setting. Um, and it would also allow to accommodate more students during these clinics. Of course, we were waiting for the FDA approval. Um, I don't know, I'm sure all of you heard that the FDA's independent Vaccine Advisory Board met today and that to discuss whether the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine should be given emergency use authorization for children's ages, uh, five through 11. This was approved by the FDA Advisory Board. So, now, once the FDA then makes it authorization, the issue then goes to the CDC and the Prevention Vaccine Advisory Group, which is set to meet November 2nd and 3rd. And from there, the CDC Director will either accept it, modify it, or sign off on the recommendation. You know, we are trusting that that process will proceed on November 2nd and 3rd, which we think is really important. So, we have tentatively scheduled vaccination clinics at our home elementary schools over a four-day period between November 9th and 11th. So, that would be a four-day period. There would be two elementary schools per night that we would be holding, holding vaccination clinics. Um, you, you know, we really believe that it's important to have our children in a familiar setting. Um, we wanna make it very accessible for our parents because parents need to be present at these vaccinations, um, of course. Um, and we wanna make it as simple as possible. We don't wanna have all these children, you know, coming at all at one time. So, basically, um, we're gonna have a registration process, which would come from the district, and we will have the parents sign up on those days. And they would, and we're gonna ask them all to go to their home schools and they would then sign up for, um, a time. And for the first, for the first vaccine, which would be November 9th through the 12th, but at the same time, they would be allowed to sign up for the second vaccine, which would be, um, November 30th through December 3rd. Now, please note that these are tentative dates. Um, we're hoping to confirm them soon. And the tentative time would be five to eight. So, it's all tentative and I, I know, but we're excited about this. We want to provide our parents with the easy access to the vaccination. Um, and all the communication is gonna come out from us. Um, and the designated time and the, the school. We don't have the dates of what night the specific schools will help, help, hold the clinics at this time. We are working on all that. I know Jim Hackett and Jeannie are working with the village to determine all the logistics because then, um, students have to wait 15 minutes after their vaccine. They cannot leave. So, we have to have a separate room for that. And we're trying to get creative of how we can, um, make that a real positive room for them so they'll wanna come back for the second dose. That's really important. Um, these are young children and, you know, we have to remember that. So, the under 12 students at the middle school, we are also concerned about them and they're gonna receive, they can go to, receive the vaccination at their feeder school. So, but those are children only 11 and under. The children that are over the age of 11, they'll not be able to attend. It's a different dose, so we cannot accommodate them at this clinic. So, we're hoping that, our plan is to send out the formal communication on Friday, uh, November 29th. And all of this could then be finalized as far as the date and the time. But we're, we're really excited about that. That would mean if, uh, this moves forward, as indicated, um, a lot of our students will be vaccinated and that would totally change the quarantine situation. Because if, uh, if a student is vaccinated, they're asymptomatic, they only have to, um, no miss school, no miss work, no miss, no miss of, of school activities. All they have to do is get tested within three to five days after exposure and then present that information to the school nurse. So, if they're symptomatic, of course, we're asking that they stay home until their symptoms are no longer. But, um, it would really change a lot of things for us. So, we're very excited about that. Um, we're all working very diligently to get that off the ground. Is there anything, uh, Jim or Amanda, you wanna add to that that I might have missed or?
Um, I think maybe just the date of the communication. Um, so, I think we will tentatively send out the dates this week in our newsletter. And we should be able to confirm pending approval, which we're expecting next week. We would be able to send out the registration links, um, probably by November 4th is what Dr. Chapel said. So, the village is gonna be setting all that up because it goes through, uh, a portal, uh, through IDPH. So, it's all connected. Um, and then we would get eight separate links for all of our schools. So, we're gonna handle getting that communication out. So, that would go out next week, but we just wanna put those dates, um, on parents' radar so that they, they know and can plan.
Jim, anything you wanna add about that? I know you're working diligently to be able to, you know, logistically try to get all of this done in a very effective manner and with safety, um, as being very manageable for our children.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the biggest driver and that's, that's the, the concern of the village as well, the safety. Um, this event needs to be done safe, safely. We're gonna try and, and control it as best as we can. Um, and there's a lot of moving parts to this. So, you know, as much as everybody wants some answers, we do need a little bit of patience just to, to let some things develop and fall into place. Um, and, and please understand that as soon as we have the information, uh, we will release it. It's just we don't wanna put out information that, you know, isn't, isn't validated with the village. So, uh, we have another meeting set for, um, Friday with some of the representatives. Some of you may remember JT, Joseph Terry. So, I'm working with him. And, uh, you know, we'll, we'll get the logistics figured out and, um, just wait for the CDC to, to give its final approval and try and get this thing rolling.
Thank you. We could move on. Any questions about that before we move on to the next slide? We're very excited. We're very excited. Pardon me?
Oh, I was just gonna ask quickly. So, I assume that that is limited to, um, D97 students only, not just under 11. So, you need to actually be D97 students.
Yes, that is our understanding. That's another reason why we wanted it here in our buildings because the registration link will only be sent to that, to our parents.
Patty, can you remind me, um, did you say that each clinic is five to eight PM?
Five to eight. As of right now, that's a tentative, that's a tentative time right now.
I'm just asking if there could be consideration for parents who may have, um, different schedules, who may work in the evening so that at least one of those is either on a weekend or during the day for parents who may work overnight.
Um, I think that would be very difficult for the Health Department because we need, um, I think it is, Jim, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, 26, uh, people that can administer the vaccine. And we're trying to get them all, we have to have our nurses work these clinics as well. So, there has not been any discussion that we would be able to hold them, um, on a Saturday or during the day. Have you heard anything about that, Jim? So there has not been any discussion that we would be able to hold them on a Saturday or during the day. Have you heard anything about that, Jim?
Yeah, there's, there's no, at this time, it's, you know, we're really, I understand the concerns, but you know, we have to operate, you know, trying to capture as many people as possible. That's not to say that, that we, we won't try and work to accommodate and make that accommodation. It's just right now, we've been given the, the four days, and they are, the village is, you know, I don't want to speak too much for them, but I, I believe they're doing a clinic for some of the private schools on Saturday, perhaps. But let me do this, let me, when I meet on Friday with the representatives from the village, let me, let me present that question to them and then try and get an official answer, and then we can report it back if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that'd be great, because I'm just thinking about, I mean, we're, we're a two-parent household, and we are all over the place. So I can imagine parents who have children with disabilities, or children, or people who work at night, or if you're a single parent, it might be really hard to make those times.
We could ask them, Jim, about the Saturday one that they're holding for the propio schools as well. So if you could get back to us on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Really, sorry, related, just one last quick request. If, you know, as this goes through and the health department learns of more places that are offering them, one nice thing to add to the FAQs might be a list of locations that are offering the pediatric vaccine as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. In order to determine how many parents would actually be interested in this, a survey was sent out October 21st to assist the health department with the vaccine planning. 2,336 responses representing 3,458 students. So that was 90.3% plan to vaccinate their children. 5.3% will not at all. 4.4% are undecided. So Amanda, do you want to expound on this? I know that, that you sent this survey out, and you received quite a response within one hour. Was that accurate?
Yeah, we received, I think, like 1,200 responses within, I think, 45 minutes. I think our takeaway from this is that a very high percentage of our parents with children in the 5 to 11 age group are planning to vaccinate their kids, which I think is really encouraging from a community health standpoint. And also, as Dr. Wernett mentioned, our operations will be significantly impacted by that high vaccination number, and will certainly come into play when we start to talk about mitigations. And then, just to be clear, so the 3,400 number, that comes from, like, we had a question where parents could indicate how many children they have in the 5 to 11, so one, two, three, four. And then we, we did the, the sum of that. So that's actually, it's only probably like a few hundred off from the total number of students that actually are in that age group in our district. So that's a pretty good sample size for us in terms of the survey. And then the other, I think, big takeaway is that, you know, there's definitely a high interest in clinics hosted by the district and/or the public health department. A lot of the parents indicated that they are really just looking for the first available. So that also indicated to us that it is important that we schedule those clinics as soon as possible. I think if you recall, our clinics were initially scheduled for the 13th and the 20th. And realistically, I'm not sure that's going to work for most of our parents in terms of, like, I think they're just looking to do it as soon as possible. And then we did have quite a few who, who indicated they're going to be getting it through their healthcare provider. Dr. Chapel has talked to us about, you know, the fact that there are only a limited number of physicians in Oak Park that are going to be administering the pediatric vaccines. So that's part of the reason why we really felt it was important to provide these opportunities to our students, because we don't know what that timeline is going to look like for them to get into their physicians. So all of this is being shared with Dr. Chapel. She also, part of the reason that she asked for our help with this is she kind of wanted to understand the reasoning for the parents that indicated they're either not planning to get the vaccine, or they're hesitant. And I think we're, well, they're going to be working on some messaging and really just trying to make sure that they're addressing concerns and questions, and making sure that people have all the information they need to make that, that decision for their, for their children. So we'll be sharing that, but we just wanted you to see the, kind of the overall takeaways.
Michael, thank you.
Um, really quickly, just wanted to kind of quickly go over the, the, sorry, the metrics from last week. So as Dr. Wernett said earlier, our, our numbers have gone down the last couple of weeks. I think we kind of peaked around. I think we had maybe 16 students one week, that week where we had the, the outbreaks. That was, I think, a particularly bad week for the district. We had, I think, well over 100 students in quarantine. So, you know, we are glad to see these numbers going down. We had seven students test positive last week, 42 in quarantine as of Friday. The S.H.I.E.L.D. testing, we, we were impacted slightly last week by parent-teacher conferences, because we only had half-days Thursday and Friday. So that, you know, that definitely factored in. But only three positive tests from last week, and the opt-out rate has gone up to 5.2%. That's up just slightly from, I think it was around 4.1 or so when we started S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. So it hasn't gone up that much. So I think that's it for the metrics. Can go to the next slide, Michael. And just to touch on our outbreak situation, since the last board meeting where we shared that we did have three classroom outbreaks, we had one at By and two at Homes. Since then, the students that were quarantined as a result, I believe all have returned based on the timeline. The outbreak status does remain in place for 28 days, so I believe they should still be participating in outbreak testing. And we haven't had any outbreaks since. And we also wanted to just make sure you were aware. I know that there was some reporting about the updated outbreak definition. Dr. Chapel had actually provided us that updated definition prior to it being like formally, formally released. She knew it was coming. So what we shared two weeks ago was actually in line with what came out last week. So it is 10% of a core group or a classroom. So for us, that is going to be in most of our classes, just two students, because our class sizes are small. Next slide. Just a few reminders, some things that have come up in the last week or so from just, you know, parent questions, emails, things like that. Just a reminder that if a parent or a household member tests positive, all household members are considered close contacts, no matter what, and unvaccinated close contacts are required to stay home for 14 days and monitor symptoms. So there's no testing out of quarantine at this point. We don't have tests to stay in Oak Park. The acceptable test for symptomatic students has changed slightly based on the updated state guidance. So I've worked with our nurses to make sure that all of our communication has been updated. We do have a one-pager that's linked from a banner on her website. So if you go to the homepage, and I think on all the school homepages too, there is a banner where you can go if you're not sure what to do about your symptomatic child. It has a checklist that you can follow. We require PCR or the NAAT, which are lab-based tests. We do not accept rapid antigens, nor do we accept physician's notes with alternative diagnoses. So that, that was part of the update from the state guidance. I know some parents are still coming to school with those rapid tests and the physician's notes, and per state guidance, we cannot accept those anymore. So we do need to get a lab-based negative test. And then additionally, those, those tests must be obtained within 48 hours after symptom onset. And if they are not obtained within that timeframe, per the state, we are required to exclude the students from school for 10 days, which we don't want to do. So our nurses have been working really hard to try to give parents a bunch of different locations that they can go and get those tests, so that we don't have to be in that situation with, with the kids. So I think that's all. I think Dr. Wernett is going to take the slide.
There were some safety mitigations update, changes at Brooks and our Julian schools. And after consulting with staff, the principals reviewing safety mitigations, considering student needs, we are allowing spectators at the following events, our indoor athletics such as basketball, Bravo and CAS performances, band, orchestra, and choir performances, and some after-school activities, robotics, handbox, ping, Friday night plays. Okay, Michael. But there are some safety requirements. All spectators must be vaccinated. Masks are required at all times. There must be social distancing to the extent of three feet. And there's a limited capacity in the gym or auditorium, so there's going to be two tickets per student that will be allowed. And schools are managing the ticketing, the entrances, the exits, et cetera, because we still keep safety at the forefront. So we're going to continue to work with the health department. We're going to continue to move forward with setting up our vaccination clinics, reviewing our vaccination survey responses. We're going to confirm all of our details, we hope, very, very soon. And we're going to continue to track our community transmission and our internal matrix. So we're hoping if we have our students vaccinated by the time we get back from winter break, hopefully quarantine is obsolete at that time. That would be our hope. So, any questions?
Other than, I know, this is three months from now, but other than quarantine being obsolete, which I think is a good thing, would S.H.I.E.L.D. testing continue for people that were not vaccinated?
We haven't really discussed that up at this, this point, but I would think that it would. That would be our goal. Jim, do you have any comment on that?
Hey, yeah, I mean, right now, S.H.I.E.L.D., you know, it's funded by the state, and that is through December 31st of 2021. But, you know, in my discussions with S.H.I.E.L.D., they are anticipating that that will be extended and funded into 2022. And it's just going to be based on, on the need. Will you see a scaled-down version? Perhaps. But, you know, I anticipate that, that at-home or unobserved collection method will be the transition that, that pretty much everybody will be, will be making. It's just the natural way to go.
Also, when, I, I wonder if there is a way with, just because as a parent, you kind of, I mean, I know parents that forget to upload their kid's vaccination card, not for any other reason than we're all really busy. Is there a way to have a consent form at the time of vaccination to record students' vaccination status onsite so that we can help eliminate that step and help our parents out from having to do one more thing to remember? Obviously, they'd have to decide they want to share it, but that might be something that could help gather that data faster and more efficiently.
Let me, let me take, let me take that one to, to the village as well. I mean, we can have internal discussions, and I can, you know, speak to the village as well. You know, it's a thought.
Definitely. Well, thank you. We will definitely keep you updated as far as our new information on vaccination clinics. And hopefully, very soon, you'll see the communication sent out to our parents when we can confirm the dates and the times. Thanks, Patty. Next, then, we have standing board report. So folks from FAC, Fork, CCE, or CLAME?
Fork is meeting next Wednesday, the 3rd.
Yes.
And CLAME is meeting on Thursday. I just wanted to update that the, the committee is working on a master schedule that will sync up between FAC and Fork, and also the timelines, the legislative timelines, so that we'll actually kind of know what's coming and be able to more effectively time our request and also time our thinking about what we want to actually put in. Given this current superintendent search and where we are in our facilities projects, and also where that puts us in terms of coming up with legislative priorities. If the board is amenable, rather than proposing specific board priorities to CLAME at this point, I would like to propose that we have CLAME in coordination with FAC and Fork. Let us know about upcoming project or needs that might be appropriate for the district to support as a priority legislatively. I can give more of an update on that after our Thursday meeting. Does that sound reasonable to folks?
I feel like we've talked about this before, but who's in charge of coordinating CCE meetings? Like, they've never met. I'm on that. And every board meeting, I'm like, I don't, does anyone know? Luanne? Okay. Because I don't, I think I remember them not being particularly active last year either. And so I'm just wondering, it seems like the other committees have, and I wasn't on it last year, but it seems like the other committees have regular ongoing meetings, and CCE does not seem to. And so I'm just wondering, since we've talked about committee engagement before, there seems to be a need for that committee, but why they don't meet regularly? So I'm gonna, I'll reach out to Luanne to see.
Yeah, we used to meet, when I was on it, the first year, we used to meet pretty regularly, and then the pandemic happened. So it was, I think we, like, stopped meeting for a little while with the intention to come back, but it just never happened.
Okay, then when we are at the intergovernmental report, so IGO, PTOC, CEC, OPRF, Community Council, Tri-Board. The collaboration intergovernmental group met last week. And there was a really good presentation talking about kind of all of the work the collaboration's been doing, particularly in the pandemic. And they've actually seen a, a significant increase in the number of qualifying pre-screens for their publicly funded preschool programs. I mean, from November of 2019 to this year, it's more than tripled. But then, unfortunately, simultaneously, there is an issue with having enough childcare providers in the workforce. And this is obviously a, an echo of many different areas where there's a declining workforce population. And so just talking about some ways to, they can try to address some of that. And some of the work they continue to hope to do at the IGA. Looking at capacity building for grant writing. I know I had some other notes, but unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to go home and grab those beforehand. But if I, if there was anything else important that came up in the meeting, I'll, I'll send an email out. But were there other reports from some of the other intergovernmental groups?
OPRF Community Council met, and we, they basically had Faith Cole gave an update on the OPRF social emotional behavior support, and how they are responding post, not post, sadly, but how they respond during, during COVID to support students. It was a really interesting presentation on what they're doing and how they are making sure that students are aware that the, the resources are available. On top of that, they were looking for the following feedback, which is what mental health support trends are, what mental health trends are you seeing in the community? How are your students reporting their peer interactions in high school right now? And what stressors are impacting your students' ability to function at their best? Which I think are good questions for us to be thinking about as well.
Any other committee reports?
Yeah, we had a PTOC meeting yesterday. Dr. Powell gave a few updates on back-to-school stuff, a lot of the information that we covered tonight, including some of the mitigation adaptations around events. And we also put an update on the superintendent search and our, the addition of our latest board member, Shyla. And then the interesting discussions, one from DivCo about efforts that they have going to create a sort of an equity checklist for school-based events, a way of just making sure that there's a consistent consideration of different kind of equity-based concerns or considerations. And then also a discussion of the Share the Warmth Code Drive, which hopefully folks know about from their schools. But another great thing that the various PTOs are leading to generate winter coat donations, obviously, now that it's getting colder. So a really good meeting and lots of great activity coming out of the PTOs.
Any other reports?
Any other reports? Okay, and that brings us to board remarks. Before we get into the IASB stuff, were there any general board remarks?
Yes, so the Park District reached out to me and I apologize, I'm a little late with this because I was traveling and I just got lost in my emails. But this year, they're gonna continue the trunk or treat, which is an alternative for students to trick or treat in the parking lot of Regent Commons. So I was wondering if anyone wanted to partner with me to represent the board. I think this would be a really good opportunity for us to have some visibility. It starts, will have to be parked at 5 o'clock. They're expecting about 300 pieces of candy for people to pass out. And then trick-or-treating begins at 5:30. So if anybody's willing to do shifts or partner together, we can go out for a little bit and just wear some light. I'm sorry, it's on Friday to 29th. So again, I'm sorry, it's but Jan reached out to me. They're looking for people to go out. And so I was like, maybe this is something we can do together to kind of represent the board, get visibility, be out in the community. So if you have any questions, let me know. And if anyone's willing to partner, we can do it together and I'll just let them know, you know, that we will be there.
Shari, can you say the hours again? I know it starts at 5:30.
It's until your candy's gone, basically. And they said that like last year, everybody ran out of candy. So it's a very popular event, so I don't anticipate that long. So I think if we each bought like a little thing of candy or whatever, then yeah. I'll be knowing you guys the information.
I think that's a great idea, especially.
Other comments before we talk about the IASB stuff? Okay, so it looks like we got a hard copy of the various resolutions that are, who's our delegate? Did we decide that last time? Oh, Venus. The voting. You just looked at me. I was like, I don't, is that side eye? So we had gotten emails about two of the resolutions. I do want to talk about another one I have some concerns about. But I don't know if we wanted to talk about the process for getting Venus the votes or or I know most of us probably didn't have a chance to look at the resolutions, but or if people wanted to talk about any of the specific resolutions first.
I would just say quickly on process, and I have not had a chance to read them all, although I'm hoping to, whatever thoughts folks want to share tonight. I know two years ago Catherine was our voting delegate and folks just emailed her their positions on stuff and she kind of tabulated it and then shared it back out. And if there were any that seemed like they warranted discussion because there were close calls or whatever, I think we had it. But otherwise, if I'm remembering correctly, it kind of, it wasn't unanimous on everyone, but it was close to it.
Yeah, I did send the PDF version. So there is like a tally sheet that's part of the packet. So if you wanted to be tech savvy and just separate the PDF page and tally your vote on there, you could.
And you can send that, I think I can tally the votes and then report back. Because we have one meeting, right, or two before? It's the 20th. We have one meeting before the, it's November 20th. So we have one meeting before that. So if you get me your votes before the next meeting, I will tally and present.
That would be awesome.
That would be great. Say no to guns, say yes to virtual board meetings. That's my summary of my votes.
Yeah, I think I agreed with, I looked through these because I think we talked a little bit about literacy one last time. And I think I agree with most of the recommendations. The one I did not agree is the first one, which I wanted to talk about just as a teacher educator. So there's two resolutions that are similar. They're both kind of revolving around the science of reading stuff. The, so the second one, they actually recommend they to say no because it's very similar to this first one. The first one I had huge issues with for a couple of reasons. So the gist of it is that they want to advocate for legislation. So they actually have revised the language. This is on page nine, on the second column, where they want to require pre-service teachers seeking licensure in the areas listed, complete at least one undergraduate-level literacy education course. So just as a note, that's already required. What's revised or what they're suggesting as different is that this literacy education course needs to be dedicated solely to scientifically proven methods of reading instruction, which on the surface sounds good, but it's scientific, the science of reading stuff is really hardcore phonics. It's not, and what I've seen people spinning is that the balanced literacy, which most districts have been doing, they're trying to sell as whole language, which is, I mean, I'm not going to get down the rabbit hole of all of that, but balanced literacy should include phonics. And so there's a lot of concern from certain areas, certain sectors of the literacy community, that this is driving a phonics-only curriculum. So as a literacy educator, I have strong concerns about that. The other piece I'm really concerned about is that they are talking about requiring a foundations of reading exam in order to get your teaching certificate. This is hugely problematic because when we've tried to pass certification requirements that require testing, testing into teaching, it's really impacted teachers of color. And so I did a quick Google search. I'm not super familiar with this exam. But from what I saw, it has a 55% pass rate in general. It also would cost $139. This is on top of the regular content exam that teachers would be required to take for certification. And Pearson, I'm going to say on the record, is the devil. And they make so much money off of people in education. I know, I'm going to, I'm going to say it on the record. They are the devil. And so we're asking students who may already be cash-strapped to not only pay for their regular certification exam, but to also pay for additional tests that they just say, I'm going to get a lawsuit. I retract my comment.
I said, I'm sorry, I'm not muted. I said, I'm looking forward to that lawsuit.
And so there are, I have, because I think part of it is also, I'm just like, so we're going to require they take one literacy course and then require them to take an additional literacy exam as part of their certification. This makes no sense to me. I can see if you're going to require that exam for people who are getting their reading specialist certificate or their reading teacher endorsement, but for initial licensure, it's an added, it's another obstacle to getting teaching certified and it's an additional cost. And so the one quick Google search I did, like I said, I only looked at this today. They were, the 55% pass rate was based on a first pass and a second pass. And so again, one of the biggest issues with when we, they, they had the TAP, which was another teacher certification test that was required before, like each time students had to retake that exam to get to be a highly paid teacher, right? Because they're making so much money, they would have to repay to take this test each time. And so there's huge issues, I personally believe, with this resolution. I'm really surprised that they recommend it to adopt. I'm going to do a little more research around this, but there's, for me, there's a lot of red flags around this. So I would highly advocate for us to say no. Like it off my soapbox now.
I think I would like to offer potentially an alternative view. I think, I don't know as much about the assessment piece. I would want to definitely do more research there. But I think that the data that they use around the National Assessment, the NAEP report really does speak to the fact that we are not teaching reading well in this country. And I think the science of reading often gets misnamed as phonics only, but it's really based on the simple view of reading, which combines phonics or the foundational skills and language comprehension. And so there have been states that have been moving to do more things like this because how reading is taught currently isn't supporting students. I know Mississippi is one of the states that did this and saw huge gains in student achievement. And so I think I would just want us to do more research on the implications of the assessment, like you said, John. But I would really want us to think about what they're saying by the science of reading and how it's actually really an equity issue. Because when we look at who's affected by practices that aren't based in the science of reading, it's often marginalized students that are often impacted by this more deeply. But it's actually all students in this country that are struggling to learn how to read. So I just think, taking another look at this, and that's what that article says. In fact, it makes the case that we are not, we are not actually, we're causing preventable harm in our, in our schools because we're not adequately teaching teachers how to teach kids how to read. So they're walking the classrooms without the knowledge of how to do that. So this is just saying, it's extremely important. I would want to definitely do more research on the assessment part. I don't know as much about that.
That's where we're going to get into a battle of paradigms about literacy. Because I, I mean, the article, I only looked at the title, is advocating the National Reading Panel. And I agree with large chunks of it, but I will also say, one of the biggest critiques about that report is that it's a highly quantitative report and it left out a lot of qualitative research, which as a qualitative person, I take issue with. But I think one of the concerns I've seen, and I'll try to pull together some resources because this is not as much my area, like the phonics stuff is not as much my area. But there's been a lot of pushback from some of my friends who work in states that have passed some of the science of reading stuff, that it really pushes out things like reader choice and things like that that have been part of like the socio-cultural aspects of literacy education. And so I think there's certain sectors that would take issue. Because, because a lot of the research I see pushing this are folks coming out of cognitive behavioral science, psychology, versus some of the people who do more of the culturally relevant teaching, culturally sustaining practices. I don't necessarily see supporting this. I do agree that our literacy rates and success is really low in this country. But I think there's a lot more to it than we've stopped teaching phonics. And I think we should be teaching phonics. This is not by any means me saying that we shouldn't teach phonics. But I think that, I don't know, it's, I'm a little, I was talking to a colleague earlier today about some of this. And, and she's an early childhood professor. And it was interesting because she was like, by default, working in early childhood, we always assume like state legislation, policy, school district curriculum, like none of that is working well for our kids, but we keep pushing things through. And so it was interesting thinking about some of this. And I think I'm particularly troubled by the coding of what we're calling some of this. So like, you know, for those of us who weren't education before, like, you know, we talked about no child left behind as we continue to leave millions of children behind. Like, we put a pretty wrapper on things that are really problematic. So I'm going to stop talking because I could go on. But so you guys can look at the language on that resolution. I, I don't, I'm not super familiar with some of this. And I'd be curious to see if they have used this assessment in other states for teacher certification. But like I said, if we are concerned about teacher diversity, a lot of times these standardized tests have been a huge obstacle for folks getting their teaching certification.
I just, I think the one other thing I'll say is I think depending on what culturally responsive practices you look like, people will say that teaching phonics and foundational skills alongside complex thinking and challenging texts is in fact liberatory because we're teaching kids how to crack the code. And that's in fact how you learn to read. So I think it just depends on which definition.
And like I said, I'm not anti-phonics. I think it's part of a balanced curriculum. I just, I think what I've seen coming out of certain groups is that like, it's not scientific enough to do, to have things like student choice or looking at culturally relevant literature. Like, there's no science behind that. And that's what I'm seeing in some of the ways this has been advocated. And I find that really troubling. And so I think I'm always just a little more skeptical. And so I think, like, I'm frustrated because the reading wars happened in the 1980s. We were having these conversations about phonics versus whole language like 40 years ago. And I think it's ridiculous that we're having that conversation again. And I thought we had come to this balanced approach. But it seems like people don't like that. And part of it might also just be implementation in terms of, like some of the things I hear certain districts doing, I'd be curious to see. I mean, that's like the challenge with the Lucy Cockings curriculum is like, people talk about, does it work or not? And that's what we use in our district. And a lot of the issues around whether it works or not is how, how much fidelity there is in implementation. And one of, you know, and so can you say whether it works or not? I don't know. Like, you know, if you have to fly all your teachers to New York to get trained and that's what requires you to be successful, is that really the way or not? I know some districts where they're like literally just buying her curriculum and doing like zero training on it. And so that's not really effective either. All right, I really need to stop talking.
Side note, the curriculum was just reviewed on Ed Reports today. That's released, it was just report released, actually.
All right. Unfortunately, I keep you guys here till 10:00.
I feel like we should like live cast a coffee with you guys just talking and then we'll.
Please send me your, or your responses to the resolutions on the form provided in your packets.
Note that the numbering on the form is, for whatever reason, completely out of order.
It is completely out of order.
So.
Yeah, I was just sending a list out of the numbers.
And direct all your questions to John and Shyla.
If you want to spend four hours getting into.
I would also like to point out, there's a compensation one, I noticed, for school board. Actually, there is one that I thought was also really good that they do support, which is
A childcare one.
Childcare one.
I agree with that one, too.
I think as someone who's had to pay childcare often, that that's a huge obstacle for a lot of folks for considering running for school board. So lots of good pieces. And then, yes, let's keep the guns out.
Okay, the charter school ones are also, I mean, we've talked about those before, just the removal of the harm that some of the charter schools, as they take funding. So those are recommended to adopt as well. I thought also the sex education one. I mean, they say no. We all know the reasons why, because you don't need to be inconsistent and then send all these kids to the same college. And some of them know something and some don't. But they don't recommend to adopt it. But I think it's interesting because it feels so passive aggressive. Right? Some of these, when you read them, they're, they're so kind of obvious. There's an agenda that they're not saying.
I like to Google which district wrote some of these resolutions.
Yep.
It says who wrote the resolution or who advocated the resolution. Yeah. So a lot of the gun ones are coming from rural areas. Like, that's been the justification for why they need to have guns in schools. I think most of, most suburban districts are, and more urban areas would not advocate for that. But they, they justify it in terms of saying that the police can't get to their schools fast enough, which is why they need guns in their schools. I know, I know. So it's interesting to see kind of across the state, like where certain pieces of, where certain resolutions come from and their justifications for it. And I can see how it can be frustrating coming from a very urban district or a very rural district, how there's very different needs and then trying to come to kind of some sort of consensus on that. Okay, if there's no other board remarks, we have the draft agenda for next time. So nothing. Looks like the only biggish thing might be the presentation of the tentative tax levy. I think we voted on that in December, so we'll start having the discussions. Potentially by next meeting, if Rob, I guess, is ready for that. Otherwise, anything we need to add or change? And I'm assuming at the next meeting, we might already have had our first clinic. Is that right? And we'll get part of that and the update as well. Nothing? Okay, then. Okay, then. Oh, no, can we add, that's actually good. So if we could add that to, I guess, the board remarks, actually it's missing, we'll have the IASB discussion as part of the board remarks, like we had for today. Oh, sorry, it's under concluding items. So yeah, we'll just stick our, oh, and then the superintendent's search update will also do. Okay, okay. Okay, then I think if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Final roll call.
Wait, you need a second on that one?
I heard two voices and took it, but we can do a second. No, we're totally fine. More? Yeah. Carney?
Yes.
Spurlock?
Yes.
Ken Hall?
Yes.
Heard Johnson?
Yes.
Ross Dribbin?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn at 8:13 PM.